It is 6:30. I am calling our meeting to order. Are there any additions or deletions?
No, there is not.
There is not? Okay. We need to approve Select Board minutes of August 4th, 2025. Since I was not here, I am accusing myself?
I move you through.
I will second that.
The minutes.
I would like to suggest an addition to the minutes. If you look on page two, Wallingford Day reimbursement request. I'd like to add this statement after the last sentence. Mr. Galliano reported that the Wallingford Day Committee at their most recent meeting had approved his request to go before the Select Board to seek reimbursement for covering the bouncy house costs. I'll pass that.
Can you read that again, Kathy?
It's right here.
Yeah.
Do you want to read it? You want me to read it again?
Yeah.
Under Wallingford Day reimbursement request, add a last sentence. Mr. Galliano reported that the Wallingford Day Committee at their most recent meeting had approved his request to go before the Select Board to seek reimbursement for covering the bouncy house costs.
Did he say that?
Pardon?
Did he say that at our meeting?
Yes. We asked him if he had been before the committee. That was his response.
Okay. Okay, so.
I also.
Say something else.
I wanted to discuss on page three, the sand shed bids. There was an extensive discussion with someone who said he was a potential bidder, and he's mentioned throughout the discussion. I think we might want to remove reference to that person.
If it happened, is there a reason why we want to remove it?
When we get to Select Board comments and concerns, I'd want to discuss the appropriateness of a potential bidder participating fully in our discussion of the sand shed bids as received.
It's up to the board.
I would think for transparency, we should have it in there.
I was gonna say.
If it occurred during the meeting, then it probably should be mentioned.
Yeah, I think I share some of Ann's concerns about. Input into the process when he's also a bidder, but I think.
It needs to be in the minutes.
It happens, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right.
So what would you like to add to the sand shed section?
Nothing.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm withdrawing my concern.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we would do all those in favor with?
As amended?
Yes.
Yes. All those in favor as amended?
Right.
Aye.
And I abstain. Okay. Pay orders for August 19th, 2025, the one we have in front of us, I think it's the correct amount.
Yes.
For $23,880.24.
What's this one?
That is an old one?
That's today's.
So I put a new one on.
You have a new one in our.
This was the new one, no?
No.
It's in front of you.
Yes, it's right in front.
Okay.
And so it should be for $23,880.24.
And the difference is the Fitzgerald Environmental Project Manager envoys.
Do we have a motion?
We have a move that we approve the pay orders, pay the amount.
A second?
A second.
Discussion?
I have a concern.
Okay.
I voted during the meeting to not reimburse for the bouncy house expenses, so I think it's a conflict if I vote to support the pay orders. I can support every other one on there, if you want to break it into two votes.
I think it's going to be one vote, so if you'd like to abstain, you may.
All right.
You abstain.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor approving the pay orders?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have an abstain. Okay, we are moving on to Road Commissioners' report. And I think we can talk about roadside mowing, even though Phil isn't here.
Yeah, that's just an update, so you know that it's happening.
He said with Board's approval, the road crew can schedule Phil Baker and Sons' roadside mowing early next summer for the fiscal year '27 budget.
Yeah. We do that like after, make sure the budget got passed, but.
Right.
You know, we do it soon, so.
Okay.
Yeah. We could do like a preliminary.
Okay.
Make sure they set this time aside next year, and then depending on the budget, so.
Okay.
Get it done a lot earlier.
Did we just not do that this past year or something? Is that why it sort of got delayed, or?
I think the equipment. It really got delayed because of.
The equipment.
His tractor just went kaput.
Yeah.
I mean, usually, he just tackles it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, that's what, it was an equipment issue. Okay?
It looks good. Oh, good.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I agree.
Very good.
Okay. So Tiff Road, there was discussion last meeting about not maintaining Tiff Road in the winter. We have in front of us Vermont Statutes Online. If we decide to not maintain Tiff Road in the winter, then my understanding is that it has been unplowed prior to July of 2000, which means there's a process. That's described in Vermont Statutes Online. Yeah. 19 VSA 302. No, not that one. It's a different one. Sorry. 19 VSA 302A3B310A.
So, yeah, so other towns have done this. It's interesting that half the towns I polled said you absolutely couldn't, if it was a Class 3 road, you were supposed to maintain it in the winter, and others were like, we should ours, and then this was on, what's in your packet, was on VLCT's website, so there's a process to not.
So there's a process to it. And we can go ahead and follow the process, which is, I think everybody's read what the process is?
I got it. Oh, you're waving at me?
I was like, hey.
Okay.
No, actually, Rob was raising his hand, but he was waving.
I think since the folks who live there would like to have it plowed in the winter, we should abandon that idea and just plow. Instead of having to go around and plow it, I mean, if it's a big storm, they do go around, so they're coming down to plow it, but I think we just fix it and plow.
I had it with Rob's. It doesn't make too much sense to plow. Last winter wasn't always plowed on time, but it was plowed eventually. But if you're gonna have to come up to from Seven, go all the way up to basically Jennifer's Farm, then you turn around and come back, then.
Yeah.
That takes forever.
Yeah, it does.
And it doesn't solve your.
It also doesn't give the fire trucks to you any quicker.
Yes. But also, it doesn't, if you decide, Phil was saying, well, we'll still maintain our section of it.
Yeah.
That means you go all the way to Danby.
Yeah.
Come plow down.
Yeah.
Turn around and go back, and you've spent more money.
Yeah.
Because gas, as you talked about time, but money is gas, too.
Yeah.
Fuel. And you haven't done much. And one thing also, but when they do plow, they also fill in the ruts that people do when they tear it up coming up the road when it hasn't been plowed yet. And if you don't do that, all those mud, all those things are still there. When I, when they plow the road in front of our house, I always have to dig it out, because there's so many rocks in it, just to get out of my driveway. So, but it is leveling the road. If you don't do that, then all the washout and all that stuff will be there in the spring. And I'm not sure, even if you do it, it says you don't have to plow it. You still have a responsibility to maintain the road. So with not being plowed, then you have to get out there and fill the ruts.
Not in the winter, if you decide not to.
All it says is you don't have to plow it. It doesn't say.
No, it says you don't have to maintain it in the winter.
No, it doesn't say that. It says it has to be maintained year round. At least what I read in the rule says you could take, say you don't want to plow it, provide winter maintenance, or maintenance, you're right, it's maintenance, but I'm not sure maintenance needs, if you ignore it. But then the question is, is people are going to come up with it anyway.
Well, that's not if there's four feet of snow in it.
Well, not if there's four feet of snow, no, but even if there's.
The wording.
They're gonna snowmobile and four-wheel and do whatever they do.
Yes, and they'll tear the road up. But you're right, it says, it doesn't say maintenance.
The wording in the document says. "The minimum standards for Class 3 highways are a highway negotiable under normal conditions all seasons of the year by standard manufactured pleasure car. This would include sufficient surface and base, adequate drainage, and sufficient width capable to provide winter maintenance, except that based on safety considerations for the traveling public and municipal employees, as the Select Board shall, by rule adopted under 24 VSA Chapter 59, and after following the process for providing notice and hearing in Section 709 of this title, have authority to determine whether a Class 3 highway or section of highway should be plowed and made negotiable during the winter." So the wording is plowed and made negotiable.
Right. But then you still have an obligation to maintain it. That's a question of, it's a question of if the snow melts.
Right.
There's still a road there that is a Class 3 road.
Right, and I think that falls under something other than winter plowing.
Yes.
Yes. That's why it's not mentioned.
Yeah, that's what I was reading, too. It says it has to be, and it has to be for a pleasure vehicle car.
Yes.
I mean, looking at the road right now, that's one thing we're talking about, we talked about last time.
You need snow tires.
Huh?
You need snow tires.
Well, no, but I mean, pleasure vehicle, I mean, looking at our road, we have a Subaru, it's four-wheel drive, we can do it on most things. However, it only has a 5.6 inch clearance. With the ruts in the road we have now are six inches. So when you hit it, you scrape, which this says a pleasure vehicle, which says you have to maintain it for a car.
Yes.
Not for an all-wheel drive or whatever.
And it says a pleasure car.
Yes, a pleasure car. So that's the thing. Interesting thing, while we're here now, this is not to take us, this is a side issue, but not a real big side issue. If you go up, the thing I just gave you, and I didn't give Sandy one, so I'm. If you go up to a Class 2 road, I thought was interesting.
Right.
The part I highlighted was, as far as practical, there shall be selected with the purpose of securing trunk lines of improved highways from town to town and to places that by their nature have more than normal amount of traffic. Tiff Road has much more than normal traffic.
Maybe it needs to be a Class 2 road, not a Class 3.
Oh, no. Because that's the definition of a Class 2 road, yeah. It goes from town to town.
Because the first sentence of Section 2, "Class 2 town highways are those town highways selected as the most important highways in each town."
Right.
I'm not sure Tiff Road is one of the most important.
Also, it meets these definitions. That's what, it goes down to the section. Here's a section that says it connects two parts of town. Well, it does, it connects Danby to Wallingford.
We only have two Class 2 roads in this entire town. One is.
Oh, I know.
One 40 West, and the other is the Second Creek Road.
But it's not, well, it's not even a good Class 3 road right now, because we don't maintain it. As I was saying, I have not seen.
It's a good Class 3 road.
Huh?
It is a good Class 3 road.
Okay. Well, if you use Danby standards of a Class 3, and I'm assuming Tiff Road is a Class 3 road in Danby, it is well below a Class 3 road, because they maintain it. As I said, they've been there three times since last October and fixed it. Wallingford has not been there since I can remember to fix it. So it's, I'm not worried about the drivability, I mean, going around corners, okay, I can live with that. But you can't live with all the ruts and all the other stuff, then you can't drive it. That's the question, it's maintenance. And the answer to Ann's question, I don't know how you solve that, there's no easy way. And as we, as we look at it, we're the only driveway in Wallingford on Tiff Road. Everyone else, no one else, even the people living around, no one uses it except Rob's. It's really important to us.
Right.
To make sure it's open. And if, plowing it helps, because when you plow it in the wintertime, you keep, keep the road.
It helps with that winter maintenance.
Right. And as Rob said, too, if it's four feet of snow, we haven't had too many of those, we've had a few.
Yeah, it's back to Rob's point, I think, in just advocating plowing the road. You don't often get the, well, I'm not going to go up there because there's four feet of snow. A lot of times in the winter here, what you have is like, well, it might be okay, but there might be some ice on it or something like that. It's kind of a hard judgment call. And there's not, the one non-maintained in the winter road that just pops into mind is the road up to the White Racks Trailhead. And I've only been up there once in the winter, and there was a car off the road, because it looked like it was navigable, but it was ice, and some guy from New York went off the road.
We've watched people, even last year, it was funny, funny story was, we got a message from the Mary Ann, I think, in the Potential Committee. Mary Ann?
Yeah.
Potential Committee. And she said, can you attend, I'm a member of the Wallingford Fire Board for District 1 and 3. And she said, can you attend the meeting? And Joyce read the venue, said, yeah, we'll be there. She added a footnote, yes, we'll be there, assuming they plow the road, because they haven't plowed the road in two days. And it was just, immediately, one hour and a half later, here come the plows. So it has, but we also watched lots of people go up, how they make it all the way up to our driveway, but then they get that last stretch, and you all walk down up to the other, couldn't make it. They had to back up, turn around.
Go back down.
Go back down.
I guess that's my.
We had a toll road, so we could kick butt. It's like, so many of them were turning around.
I think that's the point I was trying to make, is when we say, if we say, have a sign of road not maintained in winter, it doesn't mean that people are going to say, oh, I'm not going to drive it, because the winters are no longer, you just get four feet of snow, and it's like that until March. The winters are often, you get a foot of snow, then you get ice, then you get more snow, and it's going to look like people might attempt to drive it. So I think it's better to, I'm agreeing with Rob that it's better to plow it in the winter. I just think we're asking for trouble if we don't.
Philip was always saying, it's your decision, it's your decision, and then he made a decision. He thought that was a good compromise, I think.
We voted on it last time. But we didn't vote on that.
We decide. And I asked him about that, going around to plow that. He said, yeah, but. And I talked to John Squire, because he used to plow that, and he asked Charlie, he said, I think it's too much for me to push up. He said, go around, go ahead, do what you have to do. And so if it's a big storm, you can go around and push it downhill, but you still got to be at the top. You still have to do the top.
So are we making a decision on this tonight, or?
I mean, if you're not, if you don't want to close it, or you don't want to.
Yeah, if we're fine with it being plowed in the winter.
Just do nothing. You could just do nothing.
Yeah.
You don't have to, you don't take any action if you don't want to.
Exactly.
Like what I said three months ago.
I do have a long memory, so I can go along with the idea of plowing this year, but if there's another washout or another degradation of the road, that site visit convinced me, and there were many people there who said, close the road. And I was ready to close the road.
Yeah.
And make it a trail. So let's just see what happens.
I can tell you that his fix is going to be really good, because he's going to put rocks as big as these tables in there.
I'm sure that fix will hold, but somewhere else along the road, it could slip and go.
Oh, if it's not on that road, it'll be on East Street or Haven Hill Road or.
So I have some perspective on that, because we got into, I have some perspective on it, because we got into kind of a heated discussion last time about throwing up a road from Class 3 to Class 4. I remember you were saying, you know, just don't do it, and we were pushing back a little bit. So I did some Googling on it, and it's just sort of interesting. I uncovered a VLCT document that actually talks about two instances where Select Boards decided to throw up a road from Class 3 to Class 4. Both were challenged in court. One was in Ira, one was in Dorset. The one in Ira, the Superior Court actually overturned the Select Board's decision, and the one in Dorset, they upheld it. And the difference between the two cases really was that in Dorset, they made a very clear-cut case that it was for the public good of the town to throw up, to reclassify the road to Class 4. And they specifically said there were town vehicles that had gone off the road. So they could actually make a very, they mention it in here, and I can send the link to Sandy if somebody wants to see this.
That's very interesting.
But they said, like, you had to have the facts that said, like, this is unsafe, it's for the betterment of the town to close this road. Whereas Ira was just sort of like, well, only one person lives up there, we'll save money by not plowing it. And the Superior Court said, that's not a good enough case to close the road, and actually overturned the Select Board's decision. It's an interesting, it's a two-page document that discusses those two.
Thank you for your research.
That's really expensive, too.
The whole losses thing?
To defend that.
Which is interesting, both local and fairly recent.
But I like what Glenn said about that Dorset was able to show that they wanted to reclassify it for the, and they had documents for the public good.
Well, there was a car down in the ravine off Tiff Road.
In Dorset?
In this exact spot.
There we go.
Yeah.
I don't know if it says which road it is in Dorset. The Dorset Select Board.
And already know there was a car down there, so. Because there was a car down in the ravine, remember when we went to the site visit? Everybody said, yeah, there, a car had gone down in that ravine, just when we were going to fix it last winter.
So I mean, that would be, you know, like, if we.
If you decided, like, Ann said, do public safety, there you go.
We have to, like, make a very clear-cut case.
Yeah.
Like, it says here, the Dorset Select Board reclassified a road based on the rationale that snow removal was unsafe, and importantly, this rationale was supported by factual findings that road crew vehicles had slid off the road in the past.
I never remember any of our vehicles ever, I remember one snowplow ran into a tree.
Twice. Twice.
But that wasn't because of the road.
Right.
Yeah.
But also, the Ann's question is, this started years ago. It's taken 15 years to try to resolve it, so it's not a fast.
Right.
Very slow.
We need to keep a file on Tiff Road.
Here we go.
All the documents.
Keep a file on Tiff Road. Okay. Well, there we are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look to it.
Thank you. Our next item.
So we're gonna, have we made a decision about this?
We've made a decision to plow it.
No, well.
Made a decision to plow it.
Plow it, okay. So that's consensus? We don't need a motion?
I don't think we need a motion, because everyone's.
We're not doing anything.
To do it before.
What's that?
We made a motion to not plow it before, so.
No, no, we didn't actually. We made a motion to repair it, and we didn't take any action on whether to plow it or not.
Oh, okay, so there, we took the action in the seat room.
Okay, good.
Can I clarify, because I'm confused a little bit? I agree, but I understand what you said tonight, but where do we stand on the broader picture of what happens to Tiff Road at this point?
It's going to get repaired.
Yeah, it's going to repair.
Yes. There's a repair that Phil's going to do to the road.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I kind of got lost in all the.
No, thank you, thank you for saying something.
Naomi, are you here for agenda? I don't want to just hear them.
Okay. We're moving on to Highway Department Sand Shed Replacement Plan. And if we look, we can see Glenn's thoughts on this.
Yeah, so I had sent this to Sandy, asked that we discuss it. I was kind of hoping Phil would be here, but I think we can discuss it anyway. Can I just go through this, or?
I think so.
Yes.
Okay. So my thoughts, after that meeting we had last time, I remember we got two bids, one was like $200,000, and it was really just for the shed itself and installing it. It didn't have the removal of the, what's there, it didn't have a concrete foundation or engineering work. And the other one was for a million dollars, and that was sort of more than we needed. They had 14-foot concrete walls and stuff, so. And then Todd and Phil were both saying, well, you really need to secure the funding before you get bids. And so in reaction to all that, I just kind of wanted to put my thoughts down, and the first was that I didn't think it'd make any sense to try to request funding before we had bids. I really think that the biggest risk to this project is that the voters just say, don't authorize the money, and the whole thing's dead. So I think we need to make a really clear-cut case of why we need it and why it's going to cost as much as it will. So that's the first point. The second was kind of what I just said, is that the bids looked like they were really far apart, but I don't think they were as far apart as it seemed, because the first bid left a lot out, and the second bid had more in it than we needed.
Somewhere in the middle.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And then I started thinking, my short experience here, we seem to have better luck getting things done if we break it up. Like, I know, it's just, I went to one of the Energy Committee meetings, they were talking about how they put the project out to bid to like do heat pumps up and down, and get rid of the oil burner, and no one bid on it.
Right.
But then they broke it up into just doing the heat pumps down here, and they got that done, and now they got a bid to just do the heat pumps upstairs and getting that done. And with solar panels, like, we were bundling that with the shed, and it was, like, things were just getting lost.
Right.
And we're going to lose our rebate money and stuff, the incentive money, so we broke that out, and that worked. So when I started looking at these bids, and you know, Todd's comments about, like, the shed has got, we have to know what the shed is like, how much load it can take, what the gauge of the steel is and everything, that bid that we got on the metal shed, the $200,000 bid, was very specific about what that shed was.
Right.
And he also talked a lot about how the price of steel is so volatile, and that it's going to change everything. I started thinking, what if we, like, what if we broke it out to, like, let's buy the shed as one piece of the project, and let's hire someone to do the demolition and take away the old stuff as another piece of the project, and let's hire someone to build the foundation? And if we approach it that way, you could actually buy the, I don't know, I think maybe you could look into buying the shed now, like locking in a price. We don't know what's happening with the price of steel, you know, so.
I have some thoughts on this.
Yeah, absolutely.
We had a discussion about this issue here after we had a sidewalk committee meeting, and Bruce Duchene was here. And we sort of, because Bruce has expertise in engineering.
We had this conversation because we were in a meeting with the sidewalks.
Yes.
With Stephanie Burke from Rutland Regional Planning, and she's the project manager.
Right.
And she has, and Rutland Regional has a project manager experience on some of these these sand sheds. That's why we discussed it.
So we had a discussion with Stephanie, the two of us, and Bruce Duchesne. And basically, what we kind of came, and this is what we were thinking, what if we find an engineering company, structural engineering, that can, that we can go and hire to do a design for us? What that will do is it will get into all the specifications of what we're gonna need for the entire project. From that design plan, you build your RFP right out of that design plan, and we would have an actual figure of how much the entire project is gonna cost. So both Stephanie and Bruce were of an idea that we were kind of putting the cart before the horse, that if, what we should do first, instead of RFPing out on the shed, go get a design, go get a structural engineer to make up a design plan for us. And then, and then from there, then you know the amount of money that you're gonna be asking the taxpayers for, because this is going to be, from what we've learned with the sidewalks, doing the sand shed's gonna be probably somewhere between $500 and 70, and $750,000.
Mm-hmm.
This is not something, where, yes, this is, this is something that we're going to need to ask the taxpayers for, in a bond. So what do you think of that idea?
Well, so, go ahead, Anne.
Well, I think, I think it's valid. My concern is that I think we have a design. It's been vetted by the state. They've told us tweaks they want, so we know what we want.
We don't have a design yet.
Yes, we do. We have a 60 by 80, and four foot above ground, four foot below ground, and.
Yeah, that was the, that was the RFP that Mark Tessier wrote. That was the RFP.
There wasn't enough details.
That was based on an engineer's assessment, right?
No.
The, the whole four-foot walls with the knockouts and, and.
That was, that was, came from the floodplain manager's requirements.
Yes.
Right.
This is not from an engineer. An engineer's gonna put in everything, all those specifications, that need to be there in order to actually do the project. The reason why the RFP ran into some trouble is it wasn't specific enough. If we get a design from an engineer, we'll, we'll have a cost to go with to get out to the voters, and we'll have, from that, you'll be able to build your new RFP off of everything in the plan.
The thing that Glenn is suggesting about breaking it apart is appealing, because it might be a very different.
How are we gonna bond that?
Let me finish my thought.
Sure.
I lost my thought. It might be a very different company who does the demolition and removal of the current sand shed. And it's obvious from one of the bidders that we received, that they had experience in a steel building, but they didn't, they just ignored the concrete foundation, which the floodplain people gave us a lot of guidance on. So I think by breaking it down, you get, this would cost this, this would cost this, this would cost this. You could still work with a structural engineer and have that person break it down to release discrete parts of the project.
The, the buildings we're gonna get is gonna be already engineered if we do the metal thing. The Morton Buildings, there's no engineering, it's just dimensions. You put it up, all the structural integrity of the building is done already. So the design is just the dimensions.
And I like, and I, I'm gonna push back a little bit on the, the RFP not being specific enough, because the two bids we got, just like sort of ignored portions of the RFP, like the, the RFP said we want four-foot walls, at four-foot down, four-foot up. And the one came back with 14-foot walls, the other one said, we're not gonna do the walls. So.
So, so we didn't really get an accurate reading from either of the bidders.
Yeah, I just like, I don't, and the, the first bid, the $200,000 bid specified this shed, and I guess to Rob's point, like that, that's an engineer structure. It's got the 26-gauge steel, which is what I think Todd said he would use. It's got, it's, it's rated for a certain amount of snow load, and you know, we already know the dimensions of it and stuff, so. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Is Phil good with that building?
What's that?
Is Phil good with that building?
I don't know. That's, I wanna, what I would like, actually, was, is maybe an engineer or someone to look at the specs, because there was a couple pages of specs on that building, say, is this gonna be good enough for us? Regardless of what the foundation is, is this building gonna be good enough?
The, the $200,000 one?
Yeah, but the building itself was a hundred grand. And I was like, I was like, maybe we could swing actually purchasing that and locking in the cost on the steel, because I, you know, steel, prices of steel could go up 50% in the next year.
I was here for the first one, and it was Dick Bulley, the foreman, who came to us and said, I got an idea where we can put telephone poles up and get some sink, and we said, go ahead. And that's what happened, 96, 1996. And we could rebuild that.
Yeah. Wow, yeah.
Right in the same place it is.
I, I think, I think the building we have right now is structurally unsafe.
Yeah, we've gotten a couple of opinions on that.
Yeah.
But I think, I mean, I think, to your point, Kathy, and your idea, is that it would be good to have an engineer look at the specifications for that shed in that bid, and say, look, is this gonna be adequate for us? Yeah, and.
So then, would we like to approach an engineer to look at specs? And first, we have to find out from Phil if that building's gonna work.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's step number one. If it's a yes, then, then we can take that next step. And Otter Creek has worked with us before, right, Sandy?
Yeah, yeah. The same people that are, that were there before are not there now.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So it's new people there, but Otter Creek Engineering.
We've worked with Otter Creek Engineering before.
We've worked with Otter Creek Engineering before. There's new people there now, but.
Anthony Farouhi, the one that did the, he's not with them anymore. He's up in, Underhill now, I think.
Okay.
Did he do the evaluation of the first?
He's the one that did that evaluation, one on the caution tape and the whole thing.
Exactly, yes. Yeah, he's the one who did the evaluation. So Otter Creek.
We can contact him, or is.
That's what I was wondering, if.
Even though he's gone to a different firm? I mean, we're not, it's not like we have any.
Right.
Loyalty especially to.
Yeah. I mean, what I could do is send him, what you wanna do is send like Green Mountain Weldings bid to him, and just ask if this is even plausible.
That shed looks like it would meet our needs.
Would this work for, for, to replace what is there?
And so, Green Mountain is the one with the steel shed already.
Yeah, there's, there's like, it's, it's like PSS, I think, is the, is the company that makes the shed, and, and, I've got it right here somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's, it's like, it's got like three pages of specifications on what the shed is, and it's got, like I said, it's got the gauge of the steel, and the slope, and how much it's rated, how much snow it's rated to hold, and all sorts of things.
Right. Do you want me to ask him a price to evaluate it?
Yes.
Okay.
I can do it for free?
What if we talk?
And then I wonder if they would be willing to include what it would be to have the excavation work and the foundation, if they could include that. How much, how much extra would it cost to get an evaluation of that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, like, or what they, do they think that this idea we have of the, of the four-foot down, four-foot up wall, is that, is that adequate?
We're looking for this, we like your price, but, and see what they can come up with.
Were we gonna, was the town gonna do it? Was it?
What's that?
I don't, I'm not sure if Phil thought the town was gonna do some of the, that work, the prep work.
That's another question to ask. So along with asking Phil, if, if that building from PSS would be acceptable for their needs, was he planning on doing excavating and foundation work?
Yeah, not the foundation work, but maybe the prep work.
The excavating, the prep.
But I think, I think the reason why Green Mountain, I think they talked, I think Green Mountain called Phil and had questions before they sent in the bid. And I, I think they asked them whether they wanted to include foundation, or if that was gonna be separate. So I think Phil told them that we might have somebody separately do the foundation.
Okay.
It'd make it easier for them, because then, rather than they plan it, you know, get somebody.
Okay.
And maybe ask Anthony what, what they've charged to be project manager to, or just a general idea.
Yes. Are we good with that investigation on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, and if, if we, even if we just got an engineering evaluation, we can have Stephanie as a project manager or something.
Stephanie has, would rather not do that project.
Oh, really?
She does not feel she has the expertise within that. Her thing is, and she works closely with V-Trans, and she knows everything with V-Trans, and with everything that they have. Sand sheds is not her expertise, so she, she sort of said, I think, I think it'd be better served with a structural engineer. And she was pretty specific on, a structural engineer will probably be the type of person we wanna be in contact with that will help us properly do this project.
Okay, okay.
Anything further on the sand shed?
Yeah.
Great. Moving on, our honorable mentions are go out to John Squire for ongoing maintenance of roadside vegetation. Do we have public here for public comments? I don't think so. Okay. Moving on, Wallingford Day Appointment. So we have Erica here. We have an email from her. Typically, when someone is interested in joining a committee, they would attend one of the meetings, and then the committee would send a recommendation to us. However, Wallingford Day isn't gonna be meeting again until spring, so I wanted to add this on to the agenda. Wallingford Day is a seven-member committee, and with one long-term vacancy and two recent resignations, they're down to four members. So, do we have any questions for Erica, or?
Well, when I saw this, I thought it made a lot of sense, and I'd like to support it.
And I, I also felt I can see how this would be well-served. Heather, what do you think of this?
Can I, can I clarify something?
Yes.
Now, you're asking to be a member of the committee per se, I'm asking to be the zoning administrator member of the committee. So I won't be doing all the other work. It's basically to make sure that the permits and things like that are what they should be. And of course, other work.
But Wallingford Day sort of has this thing where people do their, like, Michael's always done the music, and then you would help with the permitting, and then other people help with other functions. So it's kind of the way the committee works anyways.
Yeah, I know.
But thank you for that clarification.
We would've welcomed you tomorrow, if anything. I didn't know we were meeting till spring.
Okay. So you have a meeting tomorrow?
We do, tomorrow night.
So we meet every month until, I started doing meetings year-round, just so that we could prep a lot ahead of time.
Yes.
Would you be happy with her?
I was the one that asked her. It only makes sense to have her on there, especially for the permit lines.
I'll move. She gets appointed to Recreation, I mean, the Wallingford Committee.
So do we need a motion for this?
Yeah.
As we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second.
Second.
We have seconds everywhere. Do we have any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You have a zoning administrator member.
Yay, awesome. Yeah, not that I need the extra work. Besides, Heather is a member of Rotary and President of the Treasure. We already work well together.
Wonderful. Fantastic, okay. Thank you very much.
That was easy. That's the easiest part, the hard part coming up.
Town Hall, second floor, heat pump GMP incentive agreement.
Heather, Heather.
Okay, GMP has something, incentive agreement for installing heat pumps in the second floor. Do you wanna authorize me to sign it?
Do you wanna sign it?
Do we have to?
Census over. Can't imagine not signing it.
Okay, so it's this one here, right, Sandy?
Yes.
For the heat pumps, yes.
It's like a $3100 incentive or something.
And so that's not being affected by anything that could cancel the papers.
No, this is right, no, this is right, goes to right to Green Mountain.
Okay.
No.
Okay. So then, I would be fine signing this.
I'll move you do so.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. To a further discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our next item is Elfin Lake Erosion Reduction Bid Opening. We have in our, what's been added in.
Yeah, in front of you, there was a tabulation. There wasn't a lot. But there wasn't any additional details in their actual submittals that would help you. I mean, it was basically that.
So as you can see, we have three bids, Mountain View, Hathaway, and Davenport. Everything is broken out into their different price points. The FEA cost opinion, the construction total, they said would be $44,175, with a plus 20%, that must be our match, of $53,010. We can see the bids we got, and one bid falls under the amount, the, the total amount of between the 20% and the FEA cost. So on the back, you can see from Evan Fitzgerald, that he speaks of Mountain View, that there's been very positive feedback on working with Josh Cohen, who has Mountain View. And Evan's recommendation to us is to award the bid to Mountain View. Any questions?
Do we, Sandy, do you know which one of those guys there was Mountain View?
The quiet one?
The quiet one? Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the bid of Mountain View Earthworks for the erosion project, reduction project.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it goes to Mountain View. Moving now on to our next item, and that is Municipal Committee Commission Resignations. The following have resigned from committees' commissions. Wallingford Day, Monica Delorme and Barbara Hushy, Recreation, Sandra Hochberg. We have a letter in our packet. Shade Tree Preservation Committee, Jane Quigley and Ann Awad. We have letters close from both of them. And then Conservation is Jane Quigley.
Tree Committee's pretty much done to yours truly, you know.
Right.
Because the other two members have health issues, and we didn't get the bid this year, so there wasn't a lot to do. We worked with the, but I've had no problem doing it for decades, so.
So do we.
And I, I do believe that I, I could call on people as a resource for projects if, if it need be, but, you know, one cook, I guess that's it.
Okay. Do we accept these resignations?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And Sandy, you'll be sending letters of, thank you very much. Okay. Anne, thank you for your service. Okay.
Are you, do, are you gonna continue the Shade Tree Committee?
No.
No, she, she's.
I'm asking.
Not you, I mean, Rob. I mean, the committee as a whole.
He's Committee One, you just said that.
Well, I thought Debbie Scranton was still on there.
Oh.
Well, yeah, we could, we could have, we could, we didn't have to dissolve, we didn't have to dissolve.
Okay, so we're not, we're not dissolving that.
We're not dissolving that.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Committee One.
Okay. Okay, Recreation Committee update.
Speaking of small committees.
Speaking of small committees.
So I attended the Recreation Committee meeting last week. Since there is only two members, they do not have a quorum, so I was there to assist. There, there are two members, two potential new members that need to go through the process, that hopefully next, next, after their next meeting, they can present them, so that way that they're So that way that there is a, a quorum.
Yes.
There, um, in, in, in the packet, the, a new, what was it called?
Field Use Agreement.
Field Use Agreement that David created. So that way they'll have that to sign along with the other, to clarify some things, um...
Yes.
Uh, maybe down the future, in the future, it can be more concise and combined for one document. But right now, there's the two.
Is this the new one in front of you?
Yes, I think so, it's the one in here, because there was a couple going around.
Okay.
But it doesn't have, there was one thing that we did discuss was having a potential fee for chalk if you're going to use the field. Was one thing that we discussed, have added. Um, so that way every group helps pay for the chalk.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
The other bigger thing, did David email you about the cameras?
No.
Okay. Well, the ones that got broken?
Yes.
That we need to get replaced?
Yes.
He was wondering if there was an insurance claim?
We get five hundred for everything.
Okay.
The picnic table, the pump, and the cameras.
It was every, okay, that's, it was between, because we need to get the picnic table looked into getting fixed, because we were worried about the safety of that.
Right.
And then the cameras. So we were, so financially, we was wondering how much money?
So I guess it's five hundred?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, not a lot. No.
So we get five hundred dollars, so, and then, you know, whatever we want to take out of the budget for it.
Right.
I don't think the cameras, not much though.
No. No, because I know when it first came up, we were discussing, because I think it was Phil that even made the comment about the electric, you know, a digital one, which would cost more than a monthly fee of internet.
But it would be worth it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
And if we went that route, who, what budget would that internet come through? That's, with the rec budget, that would be kind of killing there.
Yeah.
If there was a more of a safety budget with the town, would that be something to look into, that I would fall into that? Because it would be more than just, because those cameras capture more things than just the vandalism. That costs us a lot of money. But also if other things go down in either, in the places.
Well, I've been down there by myself for a couple hours to look through the video cameras and it's very, it feels very unsafe because that room is, that building's enclosed. You have no idea of coming, somebody's coming up.
Right.
You know, we had somebody's purse stolen and, you know, and I went down there and I, you know, spent an hour and a half or more down there and to try to find it and, and it, yeah. It would be nice if there was actually internet there, because like, we have these cameras on our phone.
Yeah.
So when that little thing went up through, you know, I was in the middle of a project, so Julie could sit on her phone at home and you didn't have to sit in that, you know, office or little room by yourself with no idea of somebody's coming up behind you. And it's a thousand degrees in there.
Yes.
So it would be worthwhile to look at internet. So that also costs a lot of money, because I spent several hours down there.
Yes.
For the safety of everybody.
It is.
And that's where, like, because when this was proposed years ago, I said I had to come out of the rec committee money for the internet, but didn't know if there was another, because it's not just rec, I mean, it's your safety, it's the town's safety. If there was another budget that could help maybe potentially pay for that, if that's the route that we wanted to go.
Would we use building fund money for that? Because it's a build, it's a, it's a building?
I think so, yeah.
We're having a lot of requests coming, little pockets of money that we have.
Yeah, that's what's...
Yeah.
That's not going to be wildly expensive, right, to install?
The installation, if people volunteered, would be terrible. The, I mean, I think the bigger, and the devices are not expensive. It's going to be that monthly cost.
From VITAL, yeah.
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 Which I don't, I don't know how much that would cost, so...
I think, could VITAL give us an, an idea of how much extra would be?
Let me go pull a detail bill and I might be able to get an idea.
All right. Because if that was something, because I mean, that would help the staff.
I might be able to get a...
So it would be, you guys would have to...
Ours is seventy bucks a month at our house.
Right, seventy-five to mine. I just took the phone off.
Might it be clustered discounted because we have others?
We just took off...
That's what I'm wondering too, because we already have one. Would they give us a break?
They might, they might give us a discount, because we have more than one.
Yeah.
So whichever route we go, is we need to get those cameras looked into getting...
I mean, we don't even have cameras at the town garage and we have hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment over there.
Yeah.
Maybe we get three spots.
Maybe three.
Maybe we should look at that.
Maybe we should do them both at the same time.
Especially if we're going to, you know, eventually put up a new sand shed and stuff. And we have, and we have, and we leave some of those, that equipment out under the sand shed right now.
Right.
Okay.
So that, that's, that was one of, those are the bigger things we discussed, was the recruitment. So if anybody knows anybody else wants to join the rec committee, it's a great group.
Great group.
Do they know you're not appointing tonight?
I, we, I, that email, we probably, we need to respond back, because they're not quite sure those, how meetings go.
Right.
Did they elect a, a chair?
Um, interim, until...
Interim?
And who is that?
David.
Okay.
Until there is more members and then they want to...
Wait. Then they could set up a structural reorganization meeting with, with the new members they have.
That's what they would like to...
So, you, they should have one more meeting, decide on the possible two candidates and then send the recommendations.
Because I mean, maybe somebody else, but maybe, you never know. Maybe everybody will come out of the board work right now and volunteer and they got to choose.
Have we gone out to Front Porch Forum?
They, it is posted on their regular...
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
There we go.
In case kids are going back to school, people are going to be like, I have all this time on my hands.
So just, since we have pig TV here, Recreation Committee in Wallingford has openings. If you would like to be part of Recreation Committee, please step up. You'll feel good and we will be thankful.
And if the Recreation Committee's not your thing, there's many other postings. Just look on our website and you can see what opportunities are out there.
Exactly, thank you very much.
And FYI, it looks like internet's about a hundred and twenty bucks a month.
Okay. That seems steep.
That's more than at home.
Yeah.
It might be because it's commercial or, I mean, this, I don't know.
We need to negotiate.
Yes, I think you're right, Anne.
It's a discount.
I think you're right, we, we need a discount. Um, okay. So now on to agenda building.
I got one.
Okay.
The clock.
The clock in town.
Yes.
The clock needs to work. Needs to ring, being, being on two o'clock and, and do the whole thing.
Or at least keep time. At least keep time.
Which clock is this?
The clock on top of the town.
It says twenty-one to three. It's set up for ten years.
The siren works?
That needs to be fixed.
That's not amazing.
We were, under budget, a, a lot this year. We've got to find...
Well, we got a lot of things to spend it on.
And we have to find something to do it, which I'm, I'm looking into, but...
So you want the clock on up?
It's got a function, it's got a function. It's only run twice a day.
We should probably put sidewalks on in that kind of agenda, do you think?
I think you, under other business, you should give them a update and then we can keep adding it.
Okay.
But clocks, Alan Grace from Middletown Springs has been making that clock for many, many years. And Alan Grace, the clock doctor from Middletown, has maintained that clock for many years.
Yeah.
It's very fickle, it's very fickle. It's not going to be, it's not going to be a cheap endeavor to get that clock running.
Aye.
You know, uh...
It's going to be a...
Nothing's cheap, is it?
Instead of restoring the clock so that it works like old-fashioned clock mechanism, you can get an electronic implant and it's, it's a one-time cost, I mean, it's cheap. I mean, it's not something I would do for my grandfather clock at home, but for a clock like this, something that doesn't need fine-tuning, uh, mechanical assistance.
So I'm going to say that since we're putting this on a future agenda, that maybe we table conversation on this right now and, um, have this on an upcoming meeting. Okay. We're moving on to Select Board Comments and Concerns, and I know Anne has one. I'd like to start with mine first, because I think mine's going to be simpler. Um, so, uh, every year, um, the lake opens late and, and shuts down early. And I would love to see if there's any way that we can have the lake even without staff, if the gate can just be open, maybe a little bit earlier in the season, rather than the middle of June, like, even like June first or something. And then have it be open for, it would be great, my wish would be until Labor Day, Labor Day weekend, but even, even like now it's closed this week and we're going to have some warm days coming up. So, I would love to see the lake be open a little bit longer, even if we don't, can't have concession the entire time. Just have the gate open so people can use the facility.
Be able to use, I mean, they wouldn't be able to use concessions. We wouldn't have employees, they wouldn't even be able to use the bathrooms.
We have the porta potty there.
Right, but you wouldn't have anybody ma, you wouldn't have anybody overseeing it.
No.
What about break-ins? What about people driving down? Do you know that people have actually, when they have driven past the parking lot, down past concessions, down to the beach to unload their boats? It's, it's unbelievable that that's actually happened. I, I think the idea is good.
Yeah.
Worth talking about, but you're talking about, especially on weekends, who's going to go over and unlock it in the morning? Who's going to lock it up at night? Who's going to kick everybody out when you want them out of there? It's, you're, you're...
I would be willing to volunteer.
But you are talking about opening up a facility that's hidden and leaving it unsupervised at all. No supervision whatsoever.
Anybody can go there, make a park that, that Stone Meadow, and walk in, right?
Yeah.
I think that's better than putting cars in. I mean, you're, you're not, you're not shutting it down just for the cars. I mean, people, people can go there and they do.
Could we leave the porta potty there for like an extra month or something? For when the people are down there, you know?
Maybe we could do that.
Well, it's going to, it's already going to stay there this year because of the, um, constructions, but we could certainly leave it there.
Just the thought and then that people never walk in.
Certainly leave that there through like October or whatever, yeah.
So maybe we just make it that you, you can't drive up, you can just park at Stone Meadow and walk in.
Or, or the gate too, you can walk in that way.
Right.
Yeah.
But then at least if they have that facility, I mean, they don't, they can't wash their hands, but maybe they're not trying to break in to this bathroom with the water turned off and just about me for an extra month or something.
I like that idea.
I, I think a trial, like, try it, see how it works.
I don't think we even have to advertise it if we...
I mean, I've seen people leave dirty, very dirty diapers all over the picnic tables. And it's, because there's no trash can or trash removal, uh, it's distasteful.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's too bad, because it's just a few people who don't kind of get it and it deprives others, but...
I've seen on some trails that they put a sign saying there is no trash disposal.
Carry out.
Um, leave, yeah, leave, leave no trace.
Right, yeah, that's, we could try that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And Anne, I know you have a concern.
Yeah, you know, I went home from the last meeting. We had a discussion about the sand shed bids that came in. All of us participated and Mr. Galliano was here as a citizen and, uh, had attended because he wanted to discuss something with Wallingford Day, but, um...
That was my porta potty.
During the discussion, he was as much part of the discussion as we were and then I started feeling kind of queasy because...
And I put my hand up like that, you know, but he's...
He didn't stop.
He's, he's not welcome to, to...
It's just, I think we need to look squeaky clean. We're entering a bid bidding process and we've got someone who says, well, I want to bid, but this is, I recommend this and that.
I'll help you figure out what the bid is.
Let me finish, Rob, please. I, I just, I felt a little weird at the time, but I kept going and I even responded to him a couple times.
He asked me.
When I went home that night, it really bothered me. It bothered me to the point where I had trouble sleeping, thinking, you have to be really, you have to have your boundaries around bids.
You, you, you know...
I'm done.
Okay, I'm sorry. If you think of it, you can say port of order and should, should he not be, ask the chair, should he not be talking about this? But you, I, you know, I, I would have done the same thing and said, no, but I didn't think of it. I didn't think of it. I didn't think of it in the context of trying to be, uh, accommodating and social. But, uh, I realized after he started pushing...
Sorry.
I think the past has been that Todd has been asked for his opinion and has actually helped design plans for the town.
Yeah.
In the past, um, Phil has asked for his advice in this.
Yeah.
And I think the conflict comes that he would also like to be a contractor in this. So, seems to me the solution is not to be asking for his opinion.
You're very right.
I mean, the one thing you can look at is if we're going to go with having an engineer manager with this, that will help
Exactly.
everything look more up and up, because it's going to be that person helping guide. It's not like we're writing, oh, let's put this down, that's what he told us.
Yeah.
So I think for your conscience, going forward, that's going to have no impact on anything we do.
And that's another reason why it's good to get an engineer involved in this.
Yeah. Yeah, and unfortunately, none of us know what to put on there, so that is where...
That's why we need other expertise.
Which we have for many things, reached out to contacts in the town.
Yes.
And some of them have put bids on what they helped us build.
That's true.
Because that, with being a small town.
He's not the exception.
No.
No.
So, but, going forward with this project, we will have that unbiased person helping guide.
And I think reaching out to Otter Creek will be very beneficial to us.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Other business?
We're going to discuss the sidewalks, just give them an overview of the sidewalks.
So, um, we had, um, our final, final review meeting and out of that, um, we discovered that we cannot have, um, a portion because we submitted for the grant, the entire sidewalk segment, that's what we have to go with, basically, from here on. To go into taking a part out now could mean that with our other request, that that could be reduced. So the Steering Committee has made the decision that we are going to go ahead with the, um, plan as is. Now, when it goes out to bid, the way, this is a different bid process than other bid processes. So if we get one bid, it can be five percent above the price.
Right.
And, um, that, that would be what it would be. If it's two bidders, ten percent. If it's three bidders, fifteen percent. Four bidders, twenty percent. Five bidders...
Twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent. So...
And we would have to take them.
And we would have, we would be because...
We would have to take it. And award it.
And we'd have to award it, which could mean, right now, the original match amount is a hundred thousand, basically, give or take. With the new grant? With the new grant, two hundred thousand. If it goes up twenty-five percent, if we get that big amount of bidders, you're talking sixty thousand or double that. Sixty to seventy thousand, I'm talking.
Go back to like the, the five bidders thing, you say you'd have to, like, does that mean, but they wouldn't all come in at the same price, right?
Exactly, but if your lowest bid.
Lowest bid was twenty-five percent higher, we would.
Yes, we'd have to take it.
So the federal, because it's a grant, the federal government has created these guidelines.
Yes.
And they deem if five bidders come in all high like that, it's acceptable. If it's within twenty-five percent and we're required to take the low bidder, even if it's twenty-five percent over.
Yes.
So the reason why we're mentioning it is because right now we have the ARPA money for a hundred and eight. We know right today, that, that amount is now two hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
But, and we haven't gone out to bid yet.
And we haven't gone out to bid.
So could be a, a large local match.
It could be a large local match, we might need to think about how we're gonna put it in the budget.
That's why I put Jill helped with, Jill and Julie helped with the ARPA update there.
And my suggestion is, is if we have extra, um, asset fund money, to sort of earmark that for sidewalks. Because we're still below the two hundred thousand that we need for what, if we get awarded the grant. Which looks highly likely that we're gonna be awarded the second grant.
So right now, we have?
A hundred and three?
We have a hundred and eight.
Hundred and eight.
But, uh, set aside already.
Okay, but I'm saying, for the extra ARPA money, it looks like we have a fifty-four thousand dollars surplus that's not committed.
Thirty thousand.
I think if you look on the, Julie and I and Jill talked some more this afternoon, we went through the numbers. So the latest is right there.
Right here?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's better.
Yes, it is.
And we took out that, uh, cybersecurity review.
Right, cybersecurity and, um, the telecommunications survey, so that alone was thirty. But when Julie went through all the numbers again, that's, that's the difference between what was spent, what's committed and what's left over. And she included in that the solar.
Oh, she can include the solar in there.
She included the solar as well.
Okay. Okay. So there is, um, we have.
So what, is it fifty, what, what is the bottom line, fifty?
Fifty-four, eight, right, two.
And hopefully, we get nineteen back from federal tax credits too, but that.
That's right.
We'll have to pay that out.
Yeah, right.
Eventually, we could get that back, so that could help as well.
And there is, um, this does not include the Fernfield Farms money.
No.
So what is, what, can I, what is Fernfield Farms?
I'd like to say something about that, for.
Yeah. What is it?
I, I, I was on the board and worked with our lawyer or town agent. And we drew up a document, it was for Blumberg down here on, uh, Hardspore Road. They sold five hundred acres, uh, off, right up to the top of the mountain, big huge thing.
Conserved it.
And it was, it was during, uh, a time when there's, there was a thing called the Woodford formula. In other words, or, yeah, Woodford, Vermont, a town that was like ninety percent, uh, national forest. And we got a payment of twenty-two percent of the selling price. And that was supposed to go to us to offset the loss of tax money.
Okay.
Yes.
Because we were taxing that whole thing.
Okay, so, yeah.
And, uh, we put it in an account. And we said, the only money we were gonna take out of it was what it would have paid, what the taxes would have been for that property that year.
Okay.
And everything else gets back in there and it wasn't gonna be touched for thirty-five years. I don't know where that, but, but, uh, that money wasn't supposed to be, let's, let's, let's use that. So.
So that money came up under discussion because of Fernfield Farms money turned over to the, something happened with it.
There was a deadline, um, a couple years back where the stipulations on expired, that it could be.
The stipulations had expired on it.
And then we, we ended up.
And so then at that time.
We went, we did a.
Thirty-five years.
That was the thirty-five years.
Right, so then we, there was a special article.
I was gonna be there, but I, I wasn't.
So there was a special article on the ballot to use a portion for capital expenses. And I think we bought the excavator out of it.
Yes.
And then the balance, we then continued to use the balance for.
Yes.
To reduce taxes.
And that, that, the trustee public funds, so take care of that. And, and it was the Ralstaff Scholarship thing.
Right.
That went into the same.
Exactly.
Account and, uh.
Yeah, and there, there.
I guess, I guess it's because that expired.
It's because it expired. And then at that time, the select board decided that any use of the Fernfield Fund money would go towards capital projects of the town. So if we wanted to take a portion.
How much is in there, was it, did I read seventy-nine thousand or something?
I'm not sure.
What's that?
How much is in the Fernfield Funds right now?
Let me check, I said.
I thought it was a hundred and thirty.
I remember reading seventy-nine.
I think it was.
I thought.
Huh? Yeah? Thirty-five years.
Julie, Julie, seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars is left of the Fernfield Farm.
So seventy-nine?
Seventy-nine thousand, yeah.
Okay.
I think we should keep it there.
But if we need to have money to help offset the sidewalks.
All the time. And, and the purpose of that money was to offset the loss of taxes.
Right, right.
As an investment that, that was, so we lost the principal now, so we're not gonna be able to.
Any, any overrun, then we'll have to think about putting into the budget. Any overrun will have to think about putting into the budget then.
Yeah.
So is that, so that money now, the Fernfield Farms money, seventy-nine thousand, that's on our balance sheet? And that is something that's available for us to use? And we have, but do we have to get like voter approval to use it for something, or can we just allocate it to?
The stipulations on it have expired.
Okay, okay. We're just being conservative, like we haven't really.
That's why we didn't spend all of it, we wanted to keep a third of it so that we could grow it up again. Because it was a small amount when it started and then it built, it built up to a good sum.
What are you talking about, the sidewalk?
And now, no, I'm talking about Fernfield Farms.
Oh, yeah.
Because it was set aside and it was growing and it grew very well and then.
Trustees would do a good job of it.
And then we used a portion of it for the excavator, for the grater, for the grater. But we, we did not want to spend it all. So we count about the same amount that the fund started at is where it's at now.
So this was, this was voted on in twenty twenty-two, a town meeting twenty twenty-two. And the article read, it was, it's, it's actually the revenue augmentation trust is the name of it. Shall the voters of the town of Wallingford appropriate two-thirds of the revenue augmentation trust at the time of its termination, which was the following year, to be used for capital projects as determined by the select board with one-third of the balance in the fund at the termination to remain in the custody of the trustees of public funds to lower taxes. As of December twenty, thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, the balance was two hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Yes.
So we used two-thirds of that.
Yes.
And the third is remaining.
Yeah.
I mean, presumably if we used it, let's, let's say, in, in theory, we used it to, to pay our share of the sidewalk project. Would that be technically like lowering taxes? Because otherwise you would have to raise taxes to make that money?
Otherwise it's gonna be on the budget and the taxes are gonna increase.
Yeah.
It's just doing it upfront rather than.
Is that like a, like an acceptable use of that money? Does that fit under that designation, we're using it to lower taxes?
I mean, historically, we've just put like the, uh, the interest every year in the bu, in the revenue side of the budget and that helps lower the taxes and then we can leave the rest in the public, the trustees' hands to.
Right.
But, I mean, it could just, you know, it could be an item. I mean, the thing is, if you put it on and they say no, then what? I mean, then it just stays where it is. I mean, you could make it a, a article if you wanted, you know, this is the balance of that. So, I mean, there's something, I mean, it, just, it's just something for all of these things to think about, like.
Right.
That we're, you know, at some point, we're gonna have to pay for that local match.
Yeah.
For the sidewalks. I mean, there's, you know, you, you've spent, some of the projects here, um, you've, you've spent ARPA money for, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know if, just administratively, we decide, okay, we don't wanna spend the ARPA money on, on the heat pumps or whatever. We wanna use the building fund and that would free up.
Yes.
So I don't know, something, some of that.
If we make those decisions.
Even, even things that we've already done. I mean, can we just shift monies?
Yes, like have a little reimbursement.
Okay, okay.
Before we get too indepth on figuring out how to pay for it.
What's scary is that it, the bid, it's not gonna go out to bid probably until December, so it's gonna be a tight timeframe.
So the, um, it looks like the bid, it looks like the RFP will be written by the end of September. I think that's what Stephanie said. And then it could actually go out to bid, probably late up to early November.
Okay.
Because I think that's what they were talking about.
I hope so.
Yes.
That'd be nice.
Yes. Um, one good thing that came out of our meeting is that the, our permits all passed. So we're all passed a permitting process, which means that even with the extra meeting that we had, we are still on track with our timeline. So now, um, the RFP is gonna be written up and then it will be put out to bid probably sometime this fall. So there's your sidewalk update. Okay, so now, I think we've gone over other business. Um, let's see, I am making a motion, uh, to enter executive session for the appointment, employment evaluation of an employee as allowed under VSA, section three-one-three, A-three.
Are you inviting anybody in in particular?
We are inviting Jill Stonet here into the executive session.
Right, I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor of entering the executive session?
Aye.
Aye.